Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the February 8th, 2021 Board of Education Special Meeting at EPEF. Sarah, good evening to you. Can I have a little call, please?
Mr. Barari?
Here.
Mrs. Duff? Here. Mrs. Launle? Here. Mr. Mazano?
Here.
Mr. Mountsman?
Here.
Mr. Plazlo? I'm here. Okay, a quorum has been established. Thank you. Please stand for the flag.
The United States of America, in the name of our Constitution, our Constitution, and our citizens, we declare this a lawful and open court.
Mrs. Duff, can you take the mission statement, please?
The mission of Thor School, Mr. Katie's, inspiring educational excellence in a nursing environment.
Thank you. Our discussion item for tonight is COVID mitigations. So we're going to get right to it. I'm going to turn over to our superintendent, Mr. Valverde. Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Board members. I'm going to give you some information. I'm going to make some opening remarks, and then you have a slide presentation. So I'll answer questions from the board when I'm finished. Leave it to the not coming public to offer it quick in a few minutes. So this evening, we find ourselves in a new crossroad with the pandemic. As many of you may be aware, last Friday, Sangamon County Circuit Court Judge Vishal announced her ruling on two lawsuits that had been filed by Attorney Thompson for representing approximately 145 school districts from across the state. The lawsuit, among other things, challenged the states, specifically Governor Pritzker, and several state agencies authoritative to make rules regarding the pandemic through the use of executive orders in the emergency rulemaking process. I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV, and I didn't stay at a holiday express last night. So in a non-lethal summer, I eat my own something, of Judge Vishal's ruling, the short version is that she put in place a temporary restraining order that was only effective for the 145 school districts named as defendants in the process. The judge ruled against certifying all school districts in Illinois as part of a class action suit, which narrowed the scope of the ruling to just those named defendants. Norris District 80 was not a party to the suit. We were and are not a named defendant. On Saturday, February 5th, I sent a note to the board regarding my thoughts on the judge's ruling and suggested to the board at that time, stay the course with our current mitigation. On Saturday, late afternoon, I sent my eighth COVID letter to District 80's parents and guardians, informing everyone that we would continue with our current mitigations for foreseeable future. On Sunday, beginning at 11:00 a.m., Mr. Guzic and I participated in a series of webinars put on by multiple law firms in Illinois and by Illinois Association of School Administrators. We had the opportunity to hear from multiple attorneys from across the state regarding their interpretation of the judge's rulings. It won't surprise you that the opinions we heard on Sunday were varied and vast in their differences. In addition, on Sunday, I met with Mrs. Guzic via Zoom a couple of times. I spoke with Board President Plaza by phone a couple of times, and I met with the district dev team for an hour late Sunday evening, trying to convey what I'd heard throughout the day and to develop a plan to move forward, given the judge's ruling in the lawsuit, and what we had heard in the webinars throughout the day on Sunday. Again, it won't surprise me that the opinions we heard on Sunday were varied and very vast in their differences. Also, on Sunday, I spoke with our district attorney a couple of times by phone. On Sunday, it became clear to me that I needed the input of the board and the decisions regarding the mitigations detailed in the TRO. So I asked Board President Plaza to declare a special meeting for Tuesday evening. He agreed to do so, and we posted for that meeting at approximately 4:45 Sunday afternoon. Throughout yesterday and today, I and Mrs. Guzic have continued talking about the judge's ruling and their impact on school districts with a variety of people. Not surprisingly, not one person that I talked to has a quote "magic" answer as to how to proceed in terms of lessening the three mitigations the judge referenced in her ruling: masking, testing of unvaccinated staff members, and close contact monitoring. I want to remind everyone several things prior to going through PowerPoint that we have prepared for you to consider this evening. The circuit court judge's rulings are the first step in what could be a contracted legal battle. The Illinois appellate court will make a ruling in the near future. One of the possibilities that the appellate court could come back with is that they would set aside the circuit court judge's rulings and put us back into the situation that we're in prior to February 4th, 2022, i.e. masking. To go one step further, if the case is appealed after the appellate court really ruled to the Illinois Supreme Court, the delay for a final decision could go on for months. One of my goals in my original decision to continue all mitigations was to avoid moving back and forth between protocols should some appeal overturn the circuit court judge's TRO order. I'm also concerned that we have staff and students who are immunocompromised. We have a small number of medically fragile students who attend school here in District 80 that we must be concerned with regarding their health and their safety. As you will see in a few minutes, there are other legal, political, and practical considerations for you to consider as you attempt to provide us with some guidance on how best to proceed with regard to the COVID mitigation. So now I want to share some additional information with you by way of the PowerPoint. Last summer, August, it wasn't September, it was August or September, I forget.
We began in the last and then continued out until?
We had the board, we discussed with the board the mitigations that we wanted to be put in place to deal with the continuing pandemic. As you can see, they included what we have on the screen: masks required to be worn by students and staff. Students and staff were expected to be in school every day. That was a pretty strong desire that was expressed by many people, that we wanted our students to start the school year in school and be live in school every day, all day, for as long as possible. And it's a credit to our staff, to our parents, that we have been able to do that up to this point. We indicated that we would practice social distancing, as per the ever-changing guidance from the agencies that we were getting guidance from: six feet when possible, three feet when practicing. We indicated we would follow all of the guidance on contact tracing and close contact and exclusions as per the guidance, and that we would follow the guidance on quarantine as well. Since that time, we have also implemented one of the additional guidelines, and that is that staff who have chosen not to be vaccinated have been subject to weekly testing. So I want to talk about three distinct buckets, if you will, of things that I think you need to take into consideration tonight as you deliver it on what kind of guidance you want to give us regarding the mitigations going forward. First of these is the legal considerations. I sent to the board, and you have, I believe, a copy in the handouts for tonight's meeting, the 28, I'm sorry, the 29-page ruling from Judge Vishal. As I mentioned, the class action status was denied, so the TRO contained in the order only applies to the named defendants. We are not the named defendant. The judge's ruling on pages 27 and 28 have created confusion and uncertainty across the state in terms of just who this order does apply to, and it is because of that uncertainty that I believe it's possible for districts that were not named defendants can move forward in a mask optional manner. We did not have that ability until the judge's ruling last Friday. As I've mentioned to you, the judge's decision from Friday was immediately appealed to the Illinois appellate court. We are waiting a ruling from the appellate court. Some thought that perhaps a ruling could come late today. It didn't. It might come tomorrow, it might come on Thursday, but for sure, it must come by February 17th. That is the statutory deadline upon which the appellate court must render a decision on the appeal of Judge Vishal's temporary restraining. So we have that to contend with. Whatever we decide to do this evening, we have to be aware that the Illinois appellate court could return the circuit court judge's decision. And that frankly is one of the things that I have been trying to avoid, is the idea that we would be yo-yoing between protocols, where we would be masked required one day because of the circuit court, unmasked because of the circuit court, masking it because of the appellate court, and then perhaps a decision that would go to the Illinois Supreme Court, which could take several months to render. There are really two things that could happen with the appeal from the circuit court. The temporary restraining order could be set aside by the appellate court. The order will be kept in place until further hearings can be had, conducted, and more permanent decisions could be made, because the restraining order is temporary, it's not permanent. So one of the things that I will be mentioning to you this evening, board members, is it may be prudent to wait before we do anything regarding our mitigations until we hear from the appellate court. There are some political considerations to this decision. Whether we like it or not, this situation is a political situation, and we're caught up in the politics of the state of Illinois at a much higher level than here in District 80. There absolutely is a political component to that, and that is going to affect, I think, how things are decided going forward. The other thing that I'm a bit concerned about is that we have not yet heard from the Illinois Department of Public Health, the Cook County Department of Public Health, or the Illinois State Board of Education. Frankly, I don't know when or if we will hear from them, but in the past, we have received guidance from them, and we have been expected and required to follow their direction. Since we haven't heard from them, I have no idea what that could look like. Should it come in the next few days, the next couple of weeks, we don't know. There are some practical considerations that I think you need to be aware of as we, as you think about what direction to go. I have said in all my messages to our community that my number one priority has been to protect the safety and health of our students and staff, so that everyone can go home at the end of the day safe and healthy. That will continue to be my number one priority. If we reduce a mitigation, it has been expected that we increase our other mitigations. That's been a pretty consistent directive that we've had. We have attempted to do that relative to the other mitigation. My one concern is if we eliminate the masking requirements, do we have the capability to social distance, for example, and meet that requirement throughout our buildings, our classrooms, and our program? And then there is a component of meeting the community needs and desires. Certainly, you should consider the feelings of our stakeholders. This is an emotional issue for many people. I will tell you, since my letter will now on Saturday evening, I have received nine emails from the community. Of those nine, two were a form letter, both said the same thing, asking us, or probably more directly, dictating to us that we make mask optional. Five of the emails expressed the opinion to do away with masking, go to mask optional, do away with masking. And two of the emails that I received expressed the opinion to keep the mask mitigations in place. I do appreciate hearing from people. I do appreciate that our community did not call me names, did not question my heritage, did not threaten me, because I have colleagues in the superintendent's role in the area across the state that were not so fortunate. So I do appreciate hearing from people and the civil nature of emails, and I mean that sincerely. I don't know if nine is a representative sample, but it's nine, and I appreciate that. Another consideration that we've talked about throughout my time here in terms of managing the pandemic is the concept of risk management. And this is where, board members, you have to kind of step out of your parent role and really focus on your governance role, because we, in some sense, are a large business. And whether we like to admit that or not, we do have certain responsibilities that we have to be mindful of in looking at it in that lens. We did reach out to our insurance company, given the information from last Friday. They did not directly answer one of the questions that I asked them. I asked them a very simple, very direct question, they chose not to answer, which, by the way, was not a surprise. They did, however, remind us that there is no coverage under the insurance policy that we have enforced for the district for communicable diseases. And that was not in response to one of my questions. We have talked with you about the idea and concept of tort immunity protection. Tort immunity protection is what protects you as board members in the carrying out of your duties. There is a standard that you are held to, and it's what would a reasonable and prudent person do with the information that you are given relative to situations that you must take action on. If you act as a reasonable and prudent person, you should be covered by our tort immunity protection. However, if you're challenged and your actions are deemed to not be reasonable or prudent as a reasonable or ordinary person would do in a given situation, then it could be questionable whether or not you have that tort immunity protection, and the result could be you become personally liable for damages that shouldn't be sued individually and/or as a board. Our school board legal liability coverage is also in play in this scenario. We have been told repeatedly by our insurance carrier and our attorneys that as long as we are adhering to the guidelines as put forth by the executive orders and the emergency rules that are promulgated to deal with emergency situations. And we have been operating under an emergency situation because of the emergency disaster declaration that the governor has continued to authorize for the last however many months. And the bottom line continues to be, as long as that emergency disaster declaration is in order, and it is deemed at some point that the governor does have the authority to issue emergency rules and executive orders, then the expectation of our district insurance carrier in terms of your school board legal liability would be that you follow those executive orders and those emergency rules. The judge's ruling last Friday, frankly, is a bit confusing in terms of that concept and whether or not the executive order that the governor extended last Friday applies to us today as we try to move forward. So we have those considerations as well. We also have consideration to have communication with our Teachers' Association, NEAT. You see some quotes on the screen from an email that we were given from the leadership of NEAT who could not be here with us this evening, but I think it's very clear that they are in favor of continuing with the mask requirements. I do have that email, if anyone would like to see that, or if you'd like me to read the entire email, I can certainly do that.
I will.
So this is an email from the co-presidents of NEAT. It says, "Good evening. We hope you both had a good day. I received this yesterday. We wanted to let you know that due to previous commitments, Trish and I," and this is from Judy Figueroa, "Trish and I are unable to attend tomorrow evening's board meeting. We know you both, since you sent this to both Mrs. Guzic and I. We know you are both aware of our general thoughts, and thank you in advance for articulating them to the board should they wish to know. We weren't sure if you needed slash would like something in writing. If so, we have prepared the following statement. The statement is this: The decision regarding masking has the potential to shut our schools down, effectively closing our school buildings, and perhaps not being potent enough to stop in-person learning altogether, and perhaps being potent enough, I'm sorry. Proudly, we have been able to have students in our classrooms for this school year and much of last year. This is because public health, safety majors have been taken that follow the advice of scientists and healthcare professionals. Without those safety majors in place, we risk forcing our teachers, our education employees, and our students to be out sick or forced into quarantine. Science is there, masking along with vaccines, testing, social distancing, and quarantining are the best ways to protect against the virus. Removing any of these protections would be detrimental to our students and staff's safety. Ultimately, what is most important is that our members have a safe working environment and that students have a safe learning environment. We look forward to continuing to work with the students of District 80 in person in a manner that is safe for all. Thank you again for all you do for District 80." Now, from a practical standpoint, should you decide to go mask optional, we are required to sit down and have a conversation with NEAT about the impact of that decision. And we would try and do that as soon as we could, but that is one of the collective bargaining rules. They have a right to bargain the impact of that decision. All right, so what does all this mean? I hope you have an appreciation for how detailed this decision really is. It's one you have to think about in terms of many different angles. And so I believe that you have three options that you could consider, given where we are right now today. And what I would say to all of you is where we are today may not be where we end up on Thursday, and it may not be where we end up on the 17th. Depending on how all that goes, it may not be where we end up with a month, two months from now. And that's what makes this decision fairly difficult, in my opinion. So I think in terms of options, certainly, we could continue with all current mitigations until this is finalized in the courts. At least for the short term, through the appellate court process, which we know will have, there'll have to be some decisions from the appellate court on the 17th, no later than the 17th. And again, no one knows what will happen after the appellate court rules, what either side will do in terms of taking this to the Illinois Supreme Court. We don't know. A second option would be to move to mask optional. If you wish to direct us to do that, then I would request that we are given a few days to implement that decision. There is some work that we feel we need to do with our staff, with our students, bring down proper communication to our parents and our community. I would also like to suggest that we have a board meeting on next Tuesday, and perhaps it would be appropriate for the board to vote on. A third option that some districts are availing themselves of is to take an adaptive pause or use emergency vehicles. They are not having live instruction until there's a decision by the appellate court. So in terms of what I think we would like to see from you is some type of consensus or direction on how you wish us to proceed, and then if there's any potential action that you would like us to bring to you for February 15th board meetings. So there's just a couple more comments to make before turning the meeting back over to President Plaza. Regardless of what direction we go, and I realize that this may not apply to us on a very wide scale, but I do want to point out that if we are in need of busing any of our students, it is a federal requirement that buses be worn on, I'm sorry, masks be worn on buses when we are transporting students.
Do we even have buses? Why are we having buses? Who's saying that?
Also, when traveling to other schools for extracurricular events, expect you to
The information that you are given relative to situations that you must take action on. If you act as a reasonable and prudent person, you should be covered by our tort immunity protection. However, if you're challenged and your actions are deemed to not be reasonable or prudent, as a reasonable or ordinary person would do in a given situation, then it could be questionable whether or not you have that tort immunity protection. And the result could be you become personally liable for damages that shouldn't be sued individually and/or as a board. Our school board legal liability coverage is also in play in this scenario. We have been told repeatedly by our insurance carrier and our attorneys that as long as we are adhering to the guidelines as put forth by the executive orders and the emergency rules that are promulgated to deal with emergency situations. And we have been operating under an emergency situation because of the emergency disaster declaration that the governor has continued to authorize for the last however many months. And the bottom line continues to be as long as that emergency disaster declaration is in order and it is deemed at some point that the governor does have the authority to issue emergency rules and executive orders, then the expectation of our district insurance carrier in terms of your school board legal liability would be that you follow those executive orders and those emergency rules. The judge's ruling last Friday frankly is a bit confusing in terms of that concept. And whether or not the executive order that the governor extended last Friday applies to us today as we try to move forward. So we have those considerations as well. We also have consideration to have communication with our teachers association, NEAT. You see some quotes on the screen from an email that we were given from the leadership of NEAT who could not be here with us this evening. But I think it's very clear that they are in favor of continuing with the mask requirements. I do have that email if anyone would like to see that or if you'd like me to read the entire email, I can certainly do that. So this is an email from the co-presidents of NEAT. It says, "Good evening. We hope you both had a good day. I received this yesterday. We wanted to let you know that due to previous commitments, Trish and I," and this is from Judy Figueroa. "Trish and I are unable to attend tomorrow evening's board meeting. We know you both, since you sent this to both Mrs. Guzzi and I. We know you are both aware of our general thoughts and thank you in advance for articulating them to the board should they wish to know. We weren't sure if you needed slash would like something in writing. If so, we have prepared the following statement. The statement is this: "The decision regarding masking has the potential to shut our schools down, effectively closing our school buildings and perhaps not being potent enough to stop in-person learning altogether." And perhaps being potent enough, I'm sorry. Proudly, we have been able to have students in our classrooms for this school year and much of last year. This is because public health safety measures have been taken that follow the advice of scientists and healthcare professionals. Without those safety measures in place, we risk forcing our teachers, our education employees, and our students to be out sick or forced into quarantine. Science is there. Masking along with vaccines, testing, social distancing, and quarantining are the best ways to protect against the virus. Removing any of these protections would be detrimental to our students and staff's safety. Ultimately, what is most important is that our members have a safe working environment and that students have a safe learning environment. We look forward to continuing to work with the students of District 80 in person in a manner that is safe for all. Thank you again for all you do for District 80." Now, from a practical standpoint, should you decide to go mask optional, we are required to sit down and have a conversation with NEAT about the impact of that decision. And we would try and do that as soon as we could. But that is one of the collective bargaining rules. They have a right to bargain the impact of that decision. Alright, so what is all this mean? I hope you have an appreciation for how detailed this decision really is. It's one you have to think about in terms of many different angles. And so I believe that you have three options that you could consider given where we are right now today. And what I would say to all of you is where we are today may not be where we end up on Thursday and it may not be where we end up on the 17th. Depending on how all that goes, it may not be where we end up with a month, two months from now. And that's what makes this decision fairly difficult, in my opinion. So I think in terms of options, certainly we can continue with all current mitigations until this is finalized in the courts. At least for the short term through the appellate court process, which we know will have to be some decisions from appellate court on the 17th, no later than the 17th. And again, no one knows what will happen after appellate court rules. What either side will do in terms of taking this to the Illinois Supreme Court, we don't know. A second option would be to move to mask optional. If you wish to direct us to do that, then I would request that we are given a few days to implement that decision. There is some work that we feel we need to do with our staff, with our students, bring down proper communication to our parents and our community. I would also like to suggest that we have a board meeting on next Tuesday and perhaps it would be appropriate for the board to vote on. A third option that some districts are availing themselves of is to take an adaptive pause or use emergency dates. They are not having live instruction until there's a decision by the appellate court. So in terms of what I think we would like to see from you is some type of consensus or direction on how you wish us to proceed. And then if there's any potential action that you would like us to bring to you for February 15th board meetings. So there's just a couple more comments to make before turning the meeting back over to President Blazo. Regardless of what direction we go, and I realize that this may not apply to us on a very wide scale, but I do want to point out that if we are in need of busing any of our students, it is a federal requirement that buses be worn on, I'm sorry, masks be worn on buses when we are transporting students. Also, also, when traveling to other schools for extracurricular events, expect our coaches, players, and spectators to respectfully follow the host school's COVID-19 mitigations. And regardless of your guidance to us this evening, if a staff or student, staff member or student's COVID-19 positive, our current COVID-19 mitigations as it relates to positive cases will be enforced. We will also attempt to notify individuals if we believe a close contact has occurred in order to modify, I'm sorry, to monitor for symptoms. We appreciate everyone's understanding and patience as we navigate this incredibly frustrating time. So with that, Mr. Blazo, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Well, I want to go over a timeline of emails that the board specifically received. I can do that. I'm going to do that right now. And you mentioned it that you received nine emails. I want the community to know somewhat of a timeline between Friday and today. So I just want to go over that real quick. The ruling came out on Friday, February 4th, at 4:45. 7:47, this board received an email from the Illinois Association of School Board indicating and notifying us of that ruling. The next day on Saturday at 10:52 a.m., our board received an email from you, Ralph and Michelle, indicating that you were aware of the situation and that you had scheduled meetings with our attorney, our insurance carrier, and so on. Also on Saturday, February 5th, 7:12 p.m., we're getting into the evening, this board received an email from a parent, and I'm going to leave the name out, indicating, referencing the ruling and also their desire to go away from the mask. That email was signed by 37 total people that we can identify from the community. Some parents, some community members, 37 people signed that email or were attached to it. On the next day, Sunday, 2:16 p.m., this board received a second email from, I believe it's a parent in this district, signed by 20 community members and parents indicating their desire and their hope that the mask get taken away. 6:40 Sunday night, the board received another email of this from a specific family indicating their desire and their disappointment that we were not implementing the mask being taken away sooner or later. Same night, 7:40 p.m., Sunday night, another email to this board, signed by two people indicating that they like the mask being removed. We did receive an email today, February 8th. So let me remind you a little bit. Ralph, on Sunday you and I spoke, as you mentioned, the board tried to act as soon as possible. Having an emergency meeting on Sunday night, we didn't think would fit the community's needs. Also, wouldn't be compliance with the open meeting hat notifying the 40 hours. So this, we feel this is as soon as we can get to a meeting like this and be in person to hear you when it comes to public comment and for us as a board to break down what we, how we're acting forward. We received an email this morning, 11:44 today, from a parent asking us not to do anything and to stay right where we're at, and indicated various reasons as to why. So those nine emails that Ralph mentioned, the board specifically got the ones that I mentioned to you there. It's the goal of this board, as it's been, they want to hear the community and act on your behalf. Those of you that went out and voted and put us here, that's the job we're supposed to do. So from the board's side of the table, we hear you, we understand it, and we're going to have in-depth discussion here as to how we're going to move forward. I want you to understand that we do hear you and we understand. So I just wanted to lay out a timeline of what we received and how we acted on it getting here tonight with you. So we're trying to do as much as we can and working on it as fast as we can. I'll open it up to the board to kind of go to Ralph and ask him on his presentation what we're going to do when this portion gets done is we're going to go to our public comment and everybody will have to allocate an appropriate amount of time to voice your opinion. So I'm going to open it up to the board right now. If anybody has anything that they want to say, comment, question for Ralph, Michelle, or anything, now's the time to do it.
We're not going into closed, Ralph.
There is no closed session tonight. Everything that's going to be discussed will be discussed in front of the community. No closed. So, and you guys can start it, and I have a couple things, but anybody wants to go first. Ralph, I wrote some notes down as you presented. The appellate court by law is mandated to rule one way or the other February 17th, Thursday, correct?
Yes.
The Cook County Department of Public Health, Illinois Department of Public Health, and Illinois State Board have given very little to no guidance and we're not certain when that's going to come, correct?
Yes.
I want to, I really want to go into the piece where if this board gives you, the superintendent, assistant supervisor, and our admin team, the direction one way or the other, if we decided to go with mask optional, I really want the community to understand why the couple days. So if you and Michelle can go into the fact, the type of training or whatever we need for the staff and also for the students. I want to understand that piece a little bit better.
There are several conversations we need to have. I think we have to have a conversation with our community, NEAT. I think there's some communication with our parents, our stakeholders about how we're going to implement your direction, what that means in terms of our expected student behavior. We're hearing from others that some children are having a hard time coming to school masked or unmasked and being teased and/or bullied. So we want to talk about how we're going to handle that if it comes up. This is just another one of those decisions that I think we benefit from time and we don't rush into. So we make sure that we're thorough in our preparation and we have the necessary time to do it correctly.
Sure. As Mr. Graham mentioned, we have to bargain the impact with the teachers' union. They may, there may be additional materials in there. So a few days to get that together. And I think most important, as Mr. Graham mentioned, is preparing our students. As he mentioned, we have heard of other schools that have made that change and have had a lot of problems, social emotional issues between students. So we want to have time to prepare our students for that.
So this is open dialogue, right? Right now we're kind of like in the middle here and we're getting a bit to the public. So Chris, if you have something, go ahead. Whoever wants to add something.
I'm confused. Are we voting on this?
So here, so the question was, if you can't hear in the back, Board Member Lazzano asked, are we voting on this? Yes, but it doesn't have to be tonight. So Ralph, correct me if I'm wrong, if this board gives the administration a recommendation to go mask optional or to leave it the way it is, let's just hypothetically go with mask optional. We can give direction tonight. You can start your implementation of the social emotional peace with the students and the collective matters with the staff tomorrow. My recommendation would then be that our regularly scheduled board meeting Tuesday is to put it on the agenda and put it to an actual vote Tuesday night, but the wheels could already be in motion. So yes, but it's not on the agenda. It's not possible tonight. But we can move forward if that's what this board wants to do. Makes sense?
Kind of. If we're not voting on it, how does that, does anybody here on the edge?
No, my point is we can give them direction to start it.
Thank you.
Yes. I hope that answers the best way I can.
I get it.
Go ahead, Matt.
So one of the options, option three, is take an adaptive pause or use emergency dates. What example does that mean?
Not have live instruction.
Not, I'm sorry, what?
Not have live instruction until we have some more definitive answers going forward.
I'm just thinking of seven days, seven school days between now and the 17th.
I'm not saying that's a good idea, it's an option. Several districts have done that.
Okay. Hey, everybody. So I want to share my basic understanding of the COVID-19 pandemic. This is based on my own independent research, my personal experience and opinions. I disagree with some of the stuff presented to us, which I feel is also opinion-based. We touched on the fact that this is in fact political. Okay, there you go. I am welcome to any challenges to my views as soon as tomorrow to save time tonight. So I'm going to get started now. I believe natural immunity and vaccines have significantly decreased the severity of symptoms of COVID-19 and its variants thus far for the most part. I also believe mitigating strategies to curtail the spread of this disease and its variants have mostly failed. Compassionism of new variants and mutated strains is multiplying at exponential and unmanageable rate. And I believe they will continue to do so until herd immunity of all variants is achieved. God knows when that's going to be. Achieving the utopian level of compliance needed for maximum effectiveness in theory against this pandemic, I don't believe is possible for anybody here to be able to achieve. There are things that we, the whole world, are doing to combat this pandemic that are working and other things that are not. The information and the guidance on COVID-19 variants is inconsistent and of little benefit if we're still dealing with this over two years later. We are behind many other states in terms of progress in this pandemic by blindly following recent guidance. I do believe that we are in the beginning of the end of this pandemic. But no, nothing's over for sure. This could go on for years. Nobody can tell us when this is going to be over. I feel like we still have to act accordingly. I don't believe that masking has been effective. I don't believe that it's going to be enforced effectively to get the maximum benefit. And let's face it, outside of this school, extracurricular activities, going to the grocery store, you guys, everybody here is outside in the real world. It is not the same as how the kids have to come to school. Therefore, I don't believe that we as a school should have to face the burden of keeping or increasing mitigating factors when once they leave this building, where they're going is whatever you've tried to achieve here is ongoing. So here's what I believe we should implement. I want to say immediately, I'm changing my, I'm changing my perspective on that. I do understand that there should be some time to get this in order and get this correct. There are some things I wasn't aware of. I'm sure that there are some emotional things going on in other districts that are already doing this and we want to spare kids that. So first and foremost, I propose we suspend mandatory masking indefinitely. I believe we have to have a full harmless agreement in place that has a lot of verbiage in it. I don't think that we as a school district should be shouldering this burden. I think the community that wants to do this should be able to sign off that they want to do this. Therefore, we shouldn't be held liable for that. And in the event that they don't want to do that, there's plenty of discussion that we can have on this. And I think the direction that we want to go with is we want to protect the school. We want to protect the kids. But are we sure we are protecting the kids? Because I haven't seen any legitimate data that says this masking has been working. You can follow the curve. You can follow the cases. The one thing that has been consistent is we have had masks up for six months. And that hasn't slowed or increased based on if we, I don't believe that the the variable is giving us any accurate data. So I'm going to move on from that. I don't believe that rewards have outgained the risks. I do believe that continuing to implement these mandates from the government could also potentially put our school district in harm's way. Like we've discussed, if we don't, we're in harm's way. There's a double-edged sword. There's lawsuits going on now. I'm aware that there's people that have sued schools for their kids getting affected with COVID-19. I'm not aware of any of those schools being held liable yet. I haven't read any cases that have lost two people. I haven't, if anybody's got any education on that, I'd be happy to hear that again tomorrow, not tonight. I want to just keep it moving. I also propose we come to terms with the fact that we cannot provide the students, faculty, and staff with 100% safe and secure environment during this pandemic because nobody's been able to provide that to anybody. This is an unavoidable circumstance in our society. In an attempt to provide a reasonably safe and secure environment for our staff, I got a couple ideas for the staff. I propose we do force five CDC guidelines regarding both positive and cases for quarantine for the students. But this needs to be agreed to by the parents. I feel like we have to have a community on board. We can't just keep telling people what they need to do. We need to all get an agreement on this. I feel like we've been doing this for long enough. We kind of know how this is going. And I think we can all come to an agreement when we feel like this should, we should be following the CDC guidelines for the most part for quarantine. Because we don't know what that's going to do to people. But at the same time, it's got to be agreed. I'm not going to go into too many of the details as far as that, but I do feel like that should be included with the whole harmless agreement, that we include quarantine, what our expectations are. If you know your kid is sick and you send them to school, I don't know if there's something we can put in there like that, but I feel like we could all work together and make this a lot less stressful for the parents, for the staff, for the kids. And I don't think that we would be increasing the risk or the danger at all. It's my personal opinion. I don't feel like the staff or the faculty should be forced to tell people, hey, put your mask on. Hey, get away from them. I don't think that's a burden that the faculty should have to carry anymore because this is a viral infection, a disease. I mean, they're, no matter what they do, there's still a good chance that somebody's going to catch it, you know? We've already learned that for the last two years. This thing keeps changing and keeps getting harder and harder to keep contained and we are still throwing the same old, okay, put your mask on, stay away from them. I believe it's antiquated now and I don't believe it's effective or necessary. I believe that all these things, they should have been agreed to. I believe that we should have done this from the get-go. Now I believe we had an opportunity to get there. I hope we do. I also believe that if, you know, I know we have something in place for the student, for the faculty right now if in fact there's a COVID contraction, special sick leave, I don't want.
We do not currently have that right now.
Okay. I know when we were discussing it, or it was discussed, right, correct?
There was a health bill that came through the House and the Senate that the governor vetoed. There was a discussion about a second one coming, but we haven't had that heard.
Well, and, and I feel like we can be proactive, uh, at least for our school district in that regard too. Um, obviously, we expect the teachers to come here to teach our students, uh, our children. So I feel like we should have, I, I feel like we should put our money where our mouth is and, and offer as much protection as we can. I can't, I can't say that we can protect against the COVID-19 pandemic a hundred percent, but I do want them to know that, you know, like if you get COVID while coming here and you're out, if you have a positive case, whatever the quarantine is, I feel like we should still get paid. Uh, I feel like they should have full insurance. Uh, I also, uh, I feel like there shouldn't be any cap to that. You know, if, if a serious illness arises and somebody does get hospitalized, I don't feel like they should be penalized uh for that. So I, I, I want to make it clear that we want, I, I personally feel that it's important to have the faculty on board as well. But I really want to move in a different direction. And I, I know we can, we can put something together to make this work. I'd be interested in talking about possibly introducing a hazard site as well because it is dangerous to go anywhere now. You can get sick, you can get sick coming here, you can get sick going to the grocery store. Um, I, I feel like there are some things that we can do for the faculty and the staff to keep them uh from jumping out of their chairs if we do decide to go mask optional. And you can let them know we're in their corner as well. I hope that we can all just come together and uh start to move this district back to where the community expects us to be. And uh, I don't believe the time for hiding behind the government uh seems to be coming to an end. The fear is starting to subside from people. Parents are gonna fight for their children. And I hope we are just doing the right things if we can. That's it, that's all I got.
Moving to public comment, we're real close. Does anybody else have anyone on the board you'd like to say?
Good question. Mr. Grim, you said that the Illinois State Board of Education has given no guidance yet.
Mike, yeah.
Oh, I said, uh, Mr. Grim explained that the Illinois State Board of Education hasn't given any guidance yet, but that they communicated to superintendents like yourself to be on standby if you have something to say.
Please call them back, I cannot choose.
I'm gonna say it one more time, I'm gonna be loud. Mr. Grim explained that the Illinois State Board of Education that governs most districts throughout Illinois uh has not given a solid guidance yet on what to do. But I wanted to ask him, have they at least reached out to superintendents to say, be on standby because we're, because we, the ISBE is waiting for the Illinois Department of Health and we're waiting for the CDC directive. Has there been anything, any communication?
I think your point's well made, that's probably what's happened, but we've not been notified of that yet.
But nothing, okay.
Mr. Grim, aren't, aren't we supposed to have a communicable diseases uh task force? I know it's in our binder. Hold on a second. Communicable and chronic infectious disease program task force. And assuming we do not have that, that's uh to, to COVID-19 safety.
All right, anybody else on the board? All right, moving to public participation. Uh, I'm gonna have the board member, Burard, read the uh, the bylaws and the guidelines. And we ask you to adhere to as much as possible because there are 24 signings and we want to hear from everybody. So there's, if we can just review this and then we'll get to the first person that signed in.
At each regular or special meeting which is open to the public, Illinois School Code and Board Policy require that members of the public and the board's employees be afforded time to comment or ask questions. The board's agenda doesn't necessitate a meeting to recognize those visitors and provide an opportunity for comments or to ask questions. The board asks that speakers identify themselves and limit comments or questions to no more than five minutes. The five minutes may be shortened if present and must conserve time to give the maximum number of individuals an opportunity to speak. Speakers are reminded to conduct themselves with respect and civility towards others. The board also requests that speakers refrain from identifying individuals, students or staff. Speakers who choose to identify specific students or staff do so at their own risk. Please keep in mind that the opportunity to engage in public comment at school board meetings does not insulate speakers from libel or violations of privacy. Lastly, if someone wishes to present an unadressed complaint to the board, the board requests that you contact the superintendent. Thank you, and the board now looks forward to your comments and questions.
So we won't shorten the time, we're gonna get the allocated five minutes. The only thing I do ask out of the room in this forum, not everybody might agree with what is being said. I ask you to be respectful and uh just let the person who's at the podium have their five minutes of time. We're not gonna try to shorten the time short. We're gonna get everybody on the list and uh we want to hear from everybody. But just please be respectful and uh the first person that signed in to speak is Lori Manning.
First, I want to just address two things that are on my letter that I heard here tonight.
Lori, one second, if you want to use the podium, you can, just a microphone, it's a little louder.
I want to address two things that I heard here tonight that are not my fault. The first thing was about the auto, um, new compromised children. I'm sorry for any child that is born sick or that is sick, but with all due respect, pre-COVID, there were kids in our community that were auto-compromised, community kids. And my good friend actually had a daughter who went through chemo. Nobody in this district wore a mask for her. And the flu is just as deadly as COVID has been. And there will be sick kids after COVID. Do I wish that on anybody? Nobody's got. But is it fair to use those kids as a reason why all of our healthy kids have to wear masks every single day? No. Second, I'm not talking for counseling for kids because they don't want to be bullied if they have to wear a mask. Nobody put our kids in a, in a program about being forced to wear a mask. One day, their life was normal, the next day they had to come to school without a mask. Nobody gave our kids counseling, nobody. I have two kids here at this district, one of that Lee and one of that Giles. My daughter Ashley, this started when she was in first grade, it was middle to the end of the pandemic. She had a teacher, her name was Mrs. Lee. She did such a great job with the kids, making sure they were okay online, communicating with the parents, making sure everybody was comfortable. Second grade came, started in person. She had Mrs. Rodriguez, who probably had the hardest year of her career. She did such an amazing job with our kids online or in person, whatever it was. She put our kids first every single day. You would never know there was a pandemic. Third grade again, she has another excellent teacher in the speech role. She keeps academics as a focus, our kids are learning multiplication tables, they're learning cursive. Never once did my daughter come home from Lee's school and talk about a vaccine, a mask or COVID because I would like to believe that these teachers at Lee's school are putting their innocence, or like preserving their innocence. They care about the kids and they want them to have the best education they can. However, I cannot say the same thing for my daughter Lacy, who is at Giles. She started at this fifth grade, sixth grade, they started in person. Um, the teachers, you could tell they were scared, they went remote. The teachers were telling the kids, the second they started on with role learning, you better show your face, you won't, you'll be marked absent, you can't eat in my class, mind you, they're in your bedroom. You can't use the bathroom when you want to. Again, these teachers chose to stay home, our kids were chose, they were forced to stay in their house. They can use the bathroom if they wanted to, they can eat a snack if they wanted to, whatever keeps them focused. They were told they had scared a computer all day, that's impossible for anybody to do. They went back in person and the teachers were scared and they didn't care if they scared our kids. One of the teachers actually told my daughter's class, you're the reason why I can't hug my grandma. Seventh, seventh grade came and nothing changed. One of the teachers, and I actually spoke with the principal, decided to keep a tally on the board for every kid who didn't wear their mask properly and make sure every kid that came into her classroom knew what that tally was for. And not only that, she gave a speech to the class of why they shouldn't just wear one mask, but why they should wear two masks. What? My favorite of all is a eighth grade teacher was a substitute for a seventh grade class who did not know my daughter's name, so he decided to address her as, hey girl with the red hair, pull up your mask, I'm not looking to die. So it's pretty safe to say that these teachers are not worried about the long-term effects they are having on my kids' mental health. These kids are no longer treated like kids, they are expected to behave and adapt to these crazy times with no room for error. I feel like everyone has forgotten how hard pre-teen years and teenage years really are. And to add on all these new rules and guidelines and expect these kids to be perfection every day is ridiculous. And on to the other. I ask our school board to give our kids the option of whether or not to wear a mask, let some of our kids have their freedom back and to know that their feelings matter, but better yet, that they matter.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, next speaker, Athena Kalaras.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the school board, our superintendents, our principals, our teachers because as a teacher, nobody has any idea what this school year is like. Absolutely no idea. And yesterday I saw a tweet, no, maybe Sunday night I saw a tweet um on Twitter saying that once again our lawmakers are turning superintendents and school boards and teachers' lives upside down. So um just kind of thank the teacher, thank the superintendent, thank someone because this is hard, this sucks. All right, so my name is Athena Kalaras, I'm a sixth grader here at Giles and I'm here today to speak about having a mask optional district. I want to start out by saying that I understand that COVID is real and there is a vaccine and treatment not available that were not there before. Our goal as parents, which are the same as teachers, is to get through COVID without harm. However, politics, politics have led us to believe that there is only one solution and that is masks. Thousands of schools throughout the country have been open for months with no mask and there's no corresponding rise in serious deaths. Kids are still getting sick despite wearing masks. We are forcing healthy children to stay home for exposures despite wearing masks. So I ask you if that, if masks works, why don't we? We have turned our kids' lives upside down for non, um, we have turned, we have turned our kids' lives upside down for non-risky illnesses and COVID. Last year, less children died of COVID than of cancer, suicide, homicide and other causes. We are powerfully addressing the social, emotional needs of our children. And we even address the growing number of suicides in our youth since the pandemic arrived. That is what we need to start yelling about. Kids are being hospitalized, attempting suicide, are in their own social, emotional roller coasters. I recognize we have programs implemented in districts to address social, emotional learning. Despite these programs, we have put a checkmark in, we are addressing the kids' social, emotional needs, but we are not. I do not think people in studies understand how many districts across the nation have spent on social, emotional lessons since the pandemic has begun. That's how big the problem is. We think that this is helping, but it's not. We have covered kids' faces and the CDC has said that it's for the kids' sakes. Kids have now learned to hide behind their masks. Kids are struggling. What I as a teacher need is to build a relationship with my students and it's hard that all I can see is their eyes and this is not okay. I understand that there's a lot of fear in this community, but there's, we also need to look at other issues that are happening. This is hurting our children, the social, emotional needs of our children, of our kids are greater than the risk of COVID and of masks. Speaking of the kids' social, emotional needs, treating the kids, it's come to my attention that treating the kids that have returned from a five-day COVID quarantine as if they have been plagued and segregating them is the most embarrassing thing that I've heard in this district. That needs to end today. Shame on all of us for allowing this to happen. The same people that have said that masks are deeded are saying that five days is enough and send a kid back to school. So I'm pleading with you to make masks optional for this district and to not segregate the kids, um, for not, and not to segregate the kids for not wearing the masks. I'm pleading for us to work together and respect each other.
One second, sorry, thank you. Actually, the next name on the list is Dana Hudson, no, uh, Dana Hodgman.
Hi, everyone, my name is Dana. Uh, two things I want to say kind of off-script that I noticed from the PowerPoint. I'm also not a lawyer, but I know two things. And I know that a temporary restraining order is still a restraining order. Whether it's turned around tomorrow, the next day, the following week, uh, we should still be uh following that. And also, what is unconstitutional and illegal for this group of kids in Illinois would also by design be an email sent out to district eighty parents would be an understatement. In 2020, we were told to stay home and save lives and we did that, no questions asked. We embraced two weeks to flatten the curve. Then, as it continued on, well past two weeks, we were told that once there's a vaccine, things could go back to normal. After that, it was as soon as the numbers go down. After the numbers went down, it was as soon as the kids could be vaccinated. Uh, now we're almost two full years in and we're still being told that we're not ready. Um, the only difference is now there's a legal ruling that the states, uh, there's a legal ruling that states that forced masking of our children is illegal. It has been determined that the governor, the IDPH and ISBE were entirely out of line and not within their legal rights to mandate this. Why this is an argument after knowing those things is beyond me. Uh, I also think it's an absolute farce that we have to listen to parents or read emails um that are in favor of forced masking when those same parents have children that are in extracurricular activities, playdates, birthdays, sleepovers, large holiday gatherings, all while unmasked. But that needs to change the second they walk into the school building, I don't think that's fair. Um, for those who are guilty of this, all I can say is you have a lot of in our. Regardless, none of those opinions or feelings even matter when we have a legal rule to uphold. Currently, there are thirty-four states, um, actually on Five to Five News, I think that was changed. There are forty states that are currently mask optional, while only ten that have a mask mandate, which I will also say of those ten states, not even that district is following the mandate. Um, so at, that's forty to ten. At some point, we need to entertain the possibility that maybe we're getting it wrong. Um, I would never in a million years force my beliefs on others. And if a family chooses to keep a mask on their child, they should be afforded that right. I think parents need to think long and hard about the slippery slope that they're approaching when they blindly follow illegal mandates and unconstitutional acts. Today it's a mask, but who knows what the future will hold, we collectively continue to lie down this way. On top of the one hundred and forty districts listed in the lawsuit, as of yesterday, there are uh one hundred and sixty-five additional Illinois school districts that have decided to go mask optional, including some of our close neighbors like the Ori's Park School, uh, it's a Chicago public school, and Displanes District Sixty-Two, which is probably triple the size of our district. Again, at some point, we need to question whether or not we are getting this wrong. I would like to paraphrase the words and ideas of another parent because I could not have said it better myself, so I'll leave you with this. On February fourth, twenty twenty-two, a judge ruled that the emergency mask mandate and guidance from the governor, IDPH and ISBE are now null and void. The mask mandates in our school are illegal and no authority exists under the law to mandate masks in our school for our children or for our staff. Although my child is not specifically listed on this lawsuit, I understand that with this judge's ruling, all children and teachers are afforded due process of the law. As a parent with four children in District Eighty, I am informing the board members and the administration that I expect you to follow the law as declared by the judge. If District Eighty chooses to continue the mask mandates, vaccination requirements for staff and close contact quarantine, you are knowingly breaking the law as it stands right now. Uh, you are exposing yourselves to significant liability. Therefore, we expect our District Eighty board, staff and parents to simply follow the law. Uh, it was made clear that the mandates by the governor and these agencies were deemed unlawful for named students, so by design, they're unlawful for those. So by design, they are unlawful for those named students. They are also unlawful for my students. Any legal reasoning behind these initial mandates has been voided with this ruling. Why are we still discussing this? We expect that when our children come to school with no masks on, they will not be presented with a mask to wear, no question to put on. We expect that they will not be removed from their day or removed from their classmates. We expect that their day will not be interrupted, and that they will be allowed proper education. We expect that our civil rights will be upheld. It must be noted that the school has no authority to enforce mitigations or suspend our children's due process rights. Children have been subject to these illegal actions for too long. It is well past time for the board and administration to respect every child's rights and every parent's right to choose for their own kids. Thank you.
Dana, thank you. Our next sign-in is Michael Adams.
Okay, so definitely not my thing. I wouldn't do this if I had kids. So I'm here and trying to get my thoughts together and represent you guys today. I think Dana did a really good job on a lot of points I kind of want to make, let me start putting the things together. My review of the lawsuit and the things I found important is that prior to the IDPH Emergency Amendment of September 17th, 2021, they had, IDPH found that masks, tests, vaccines were forms of modified quarantine because they were a procedure intended to limit disease transmission. Under the IDPH Act, people had the right to object to these procedures. If they objected, they were in due process. So similarly, exclusion from schools also considered a modified quarantine. So this ruling from the judge is law at this point until there is some sort of ruling saying it's not. In my opinion, I'm not a lawyer. That's where I'm at. The IDPH Emergency Rule of Act of September 17th, 2021 hasn't been de null and void by this lawsuit. So that is the law at times as I appear. Also, this stuff about it's not a class action lawsuit. It doesn't apply to every student. In the footnotes, it says, "Any non-named plaintiff and school districts throughout the state may govern themselves accordingly." Okay, so that gives my student and you guys rights, okay? But if we go back and we read the law, it says that IDPH is limited by law. They cannot delegate the authority to school boards to make decisions. In my opinion, where it is, this school board has no legal authority to force masks on students. At this point, until there's some ruling, this is the law. That's where I'm at. So what I find important is due process. What does that mean? Due process is the requirement that legal matters be resolved according to established rules and principles. That individuals be treated fairly. Due process applies to both civil and criminal matters. So why is that important? Back to my kids. My son played a trick on me a little bit this week. We talked about this lawsuit. He knew about it. We discussed what we thought would mean. And he was very upset that he was to be forced to wear a mask Monday morning. So he said, hey, Dad, can you clerk that thing for me? I want to comment a double petition. My friend signed a petition. Instead, he went to school and sure the teacher said, I'm not wearing a mask. This is so right now. I'm going to govern myself. First thing, he was, you know, he got more grades the day went on, but he got differing opinions from his teachers. Some were on him, some he knew better, ready to identify and extra mask. He knew not to bother that teacher. I think she's a literature writer, actually. But the point of the matter is, is no teacher was prepared to deal with that student. In fact, today, he went back. He was a little more crazy. And that teacher we talked about in the class, he took his mask off. She sent it to the principal's office. And unfortunately, the principal didn't have time to see him today, so he did not get dressed. So throughout the day, he went to each one's classes, has mask off. They challenged him. He challenged him back and said, why do I wear a mask? It's the rule. One teacher told me it's the dress code. Look up the dress code. You'll see it. He looked it up. She had him look at the dress code. He said, it's not here. She did bother the nurse. So he's a very, but he's really not. So the point is, he was not treated fairly. He was not dressed. The teachers, I think the staff, the administrators haven't been, did not prepare the teachers to deal with this. Because he was not dressed. He decides that he was going to get his present off, but he decided that didn't happen. And that didn't happen. So he said tomorrow, I did not recommend to go without a mask. That was his decision. He did that. I said, this is your choice. I understand behind you. The point of the matter is, is, you know, he's willing to go tomorrow, not wear a mask, go to the principal's office, and he wants someone to tell him why he can't do this. So my request is that the board chooses to do mask optional, and it gives people who don't wear a mask an option. If you want to wear a mask, you believe that works. Then, for all me, please, wear a mask. That's all I ask. So, you know, I would call him off if you guys would commit to say, I need a few days. We're going to make the right decision. I would tell he is, please abide by the rules as you guys can. Whatever they are, I don't know. He doesn't know what they are either, because no one gave him the time to tell. But anyway, a few other things. Teachers unions, you can't bargain away a third person's rights. You can't do that. You can't bargain away my students' rights to not wear masks.
Michael, we're ready. Ready for your next question.
I mean, I think I made my point, right? The political narrative is changing. You see people on CNN, CNN saying that we need to stop masking kids. So I think the politics are changing.
Michael, thank you much. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Paul Wacoian. Hope that's correct. Paul? Okay. All right, I'll move on if Paul comes back. Julian Walz.
Hi. I'm going to try not to just type this in because important nurses people have already had. But before that, I do want to point out that it's so important about the suicide rate that we noted. I'm an emergency room nurse, and as a nurse, it's on a disturbing level. As a parent, it's disgusting. And kids are lanky, and they feel sad, and they feel at a time that requires psychiatric evaluation because they don't want to learn more as a parent and as healthcare employee, which American care is better for children. So I'm not going to get too deep into anatomy, but as we know, it's our sponges, you know? They have extremely adaptive immunity, and growing variants and mutations reduce toxicity levels. When they say that there's a 99.9% chance of recovery for children, it doesn't include the recovery rate that includes the chance of them having severe symptoms alone. Here is a kid that's been wearing a cast compared to an adult. They're going to wear it three, four weeks less because they have a higher white blood count, and they are able to recover faster than we are. They have higher renal, which is a very nice one, actually. That being said, most kids everybody knows from the time of October until April. I don't think that three vaccines with questionable efficacy and a proper mask from a day are going to make any difference. Oxygen deficiencies have increased 33% of kids' urinal. In fact, they're wearing masks for long periods of time. Causes them to have 33% chance of re-inhaling carbon dioxide and not gaining enough oxygen. Diseases in cubic development to a great, thinking, being able to concentrate, fatigue. All these things are important for a child as their development is flawed in school. And I think that it's completely interfering with their ability to learn for eight hours without a mask. Their cells, they require oxygen to divide, and they degenerate between oxygen. These are permanent. You can't get that back. Sorry. I'm just trying to go over things that were already said. I think schools can safely make masks optional. The increased stress learning development and cognitive development is for our children. And society has morphed into a kind of mask culture. Our kids are resilient. For the last almost three years, they have gone from e-learning to going to school with masks all day long. I think everyone has the tools to protect themselves from severe disease or any infection because they think so choose. Making this shift, all respects to the people who will have different risk tolerance levels. Personal choice and self-protection, supporting those who choose to wear masks is important as well. Climate energy, that staff spend, policy of masks is used. Mask use is far better spent on teaching and supporting our children. It's time we stop worrying about what others are doing and start focusing on protecting ourselves as well as our kids. We're in a new world in 2022 than we did in 2020. And our policies should shift to reflect these advantages and these advances. We are not in a pandemic, but we've reached an end of it. So I think that because we've made so many changes in schools with the policies, masks should also be one of them. We can't be in these masks forever. I'm going over everything that I already said. You guys are good. Unfortunately, I just feel like our children have been a close child or with a tie. And if community and sanctuary works better, I don't think we're going to get anywhere. We need to move forward. Making masks optional would be best-case scenario to start. If people, I know that people are being tested, and if they do return to school and they've been positive and they've been effective, people, they remain in a mask for an additional four to five days just for especially a minor compromise, we can hope, you know, that just need a little bit more to prove that they are healthy, you know? They didn't even take statistical data of influenza.
Julian, you just asked the question.
Sorry. Nor should they test until vaccines have questionable efficacy.
Julian, thank you for your comments. See ya. Karen Thompson.
Hi, everybody. My name is Seeya Antonis. My husband and I have two students in the district, one at Giles and one at me. I'm here tonight to respectfully demand of the board and District 80 change of position to go mask optional in our schools. We are two years into this pandemic, and we know that masks are not effective. Our kids have been masked for over 600 days. Yet even though they are masked, it did not stop the spread of COVID, especially the recent surge of infections in our schools. We have complied with all the mitigations for two years. The kids have done enough, and it is time that we unmask our kids. The time is now. Illinois is only one of nine states that is still masking kids in schools. Just two days ago, Delaware, New Jersey, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania stated they will move to unmask kids. Many countries around the world are eliminating all restrictions, including staple orders, masking, and Vex passports. More importantly, on Friday, a judge in the state of Illinois, as we all know, voted in favor of a terrible injunction that ruled that the emergency mandates and guidance from the Governor, IDPH, and ISBE are null and void. Although North District 80 was not a main plaintiff in the suit, the judge ruled that the non-named plaintiffs may govern themselves accordingly. The ruling explicitly and implicitly implies that the governor and the state do not have the authority to enforce these mandates any longer. This is not in the parents', in our school boards', and our administrators' hands. Even though we are waiting on a true decision, the ruling as it stands today says that statutory rights have attempted to be bypassed through the issuance of executive orders and emergency rules. Please do the right thing and follow the law. Give the parents and the families of this community the choice to decide what is right for their children. If you continue to enforce these mandates, you would be opening yourselves up to potential lawsuits. Being masked for seven hours a day, five days a week is not normal. My son was on the giant two hours after school Monday through Friday. Additionally, we witness teachers bullying and punishing kids to continue masking. I'm hoping to give to one teacher in the district, one as far as telling her as a child, mask up. I'm not trying to die here. This is an unacceptable way to talk to kids, and in my opinion, one of psychological views. Many kids in the school district have had COVID. Many are vaccinated. We are at a different point in the pandemic today than we were two years ago. Around 200-plus, from what I understand today in our schools, including most of the districts staying in the lawsuit that moved to mask optional. For 25% of those districts, nobody told them they had to do it, but this ruling gave them courage. To the board and the administration, please find your courage and unmask the kids.
See ya. Thank you. Warner, Julia?
I'll make this short and sweet. It's been a long time since I've been up here speaking in this room. So it's like old times. I remember when we had a worry about the decision of going to grade centers or that calendar thing. Everybody was talking about that, and I really wish we had so many people like we have now. I don't want to talk about what the place already talked about. I agree with all that. I think the biggest thing for the board, the biggest thing for the board is that legally, and I'm not a lawyer also, I'll be on the chair, wasn't. But there's case law and there's written law. And from what I understand, the case law is used in battles with lawyers, right? They look for a case law, and decisions are made based on the written law. So legislators make the written law, and the cases that are fought and tried, and the judge's decision comes into play with all of these new cases. So there's a problem, because there's a legal liability for the district. So I think we got to pay attention to that, because if the district gets sued, I know they found that bag of money, but there's legal fees for that, and we all have to pay for it, because that's where everybody comes from. So there's a problem with that. So I would encourage us to look at following what the case law looks like, because if we get caught up in litigation, it's going to cost the district money and all of us. So that's an important thing. I'm kind of disgusted, to use a light term, about what I've heard about the teachers and the way that they talk to the kids. I've been so active in probing my child. I do wish I was worried about their math and their reading and science and that, and not politics with the children. Although I found that I had
It's being picked on. They come home and willingly tell you, I've never called my daughter a day. She comes home and calls me at work and says, what they told me today.
Right. I'm deeply concerned about this also, you know? Although my son does really like World War II history, so I guess this is all coming into focus. The children are getting distracted. These are our kids are getting distracted. I have to talk to them all the time, and I have to watch out. And I didn't think that things like that were happening in District 80. We're a semi-conservative district, and I'm happy to be here. And I heard about things happening in California and other states. And frankly, I'm a little concerned about that, you know? I haven't been one before you. I know Sarah's busy. I don't want to, you know, do all that jazz, because I trust the people who've been elected. And this job is not easy, so. So those were my two cents. If you guys want to talk.
I know how people accept you, but I think that it is important that we acknowledge that the educators and board members, I think that all of them, they have done the best job to try and make it as enjoyable for kids as possible. And I think that we do
Not all educators.
Not, not everyone, but the ones who have been Not, not everyone, but the ones who have been willing to try and be and advocate for kids, I thank you.
Yes. Next sign in, Darius. I can't read the last name, M-E-C-I-A, last name? First name, Darius. Adam? Adam Azubuske? Is that correct? And last but not least, I believe starting from, it should be optional for all the kids to wear a mask. Teachers shouldn't be pointing out, you know, for students to wear a mask. If it's optional, it's optional, you know? If teachers are afraid or parents of other students are, you know, a project to, a project to wear a mask, there should be pointing that out to students who are not wearing masks. That's about it. All right, our next sign in, the way I read it, M-E-N-E, first name? Last name, S-H-U-L-I-U-S?
I think he was signed wrong.
Yeah, it's possible. There were two signings, it's possible, but it's okay. We'll keep going and I'll come back. Christopher Toloman.
Good evening, everybody. Christopher Toloman, I want to say thank you to our board members and what you do, principal, assistant, teachers, everybody, thank you for all, for our kids' interest. First say that I am against the masks, okay? I know that there are those who want the masks to stay, but we have had the CDC bounce back and forth. They've never, ever cut the same stance on masks. One week they say that they work, the next week they say that they don't work. So who's really felt the science here, right? They don't even know what's going on. So we know that the masks hurt our children, right? They hurt their interaction with other people. When kids go to school and they see their friends, they want to see their smiles on their faces. They want to tell jokes and see their friends, that. They don't want to see their lives, their whole structure, their face, okay? That's not how we grew up and we all know that, okay? My next point is we've all had the masks going for two years now and the numbers haven't gone down. In fact, they've gone up, right? So are the masks really doing anything? They're not. If you want to talk about following the science, kids that are younger than 18 barely have any symptoms, if they, if any at all, all right? There have probably been more kids shot in Chicago since they came out. I can keep going on, but let's talk about the hypocrisy of having the likes of Michelle Obama or Stacey Abrams taking pictures in classrooms full of kids with masks on, yet they sit there with no mask on. Are they better than our kids or our families or not? I also want to say that I would like the vote to take place tonight. If the vote does not happen tonight, I would like to know what's going to happen to our children when they come to school tomorrow without a mask on. That's what I want to know. Honestly, COVID's not going away. We all got to live with it, just like Cecil.
They can manage minors to majors, that's what happens when they don't wear masks. That's what's happened with the last few days.
I don't agree with it. And I want to say there needs to be an antidote to bullying and the segregating and the singling out of the kids that do not go along with it. Get the hell Everybody's going to live in the end, right? We could all leave here, one of us will get in a car and die in a car accident on the way home. That's the chance you take with life, okay? So live it and stop living in fear. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next speaker, Adam Rosick. Amanda McPholbes.
Sorry, y'all, I lost my speech coming from the band concert. Most of what has been said, I was going to say, thank you to the board. I, you take your time to do this, I really appreciate it. I really appreciate the administration. I think I have a unique perspective because I also work as a substitute in the district. There are some really good kids here. And we need to
Amanda, thank you for those words. Thank you. Alexandra Paschus.
Hello. So me and the baby tear up.
Of course. I'm here.
Okay, so I would first like to start with the dear board and administration, for everything you've done, to give our children some sense of normalcy these past two years. When I hear what other schools are doing to this day, it reminds me of how lucky we truly are, so thank you. Now on to the masks. February 4, 2022, Sangamon County Judge Rochelle ruled that the emergency mask mandate and guidance from the governor, IDPH, and ISB are void. The mask mandates in our schools are illegal. Putting the temporary restraining order aside, I would like to refer to the science, as told from our experts, starting with March 8 of 2020. There's no reason to be walking around with a mask. When you're in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better and it might even block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think that it is. And often, there are unintended consequences. People fiddling with the mask and they keep touching their face. Dr. Anthony Fauci. March 2020, CDC does not recommend that people who are well aware of face masks to protect themselves from respiratory diseases, including COVID-19. Face masks should be used by people who show symptoms of COVID-19 to help prevent the spread of the disease to others. Last, late last year into this year, more and more studies have come out that say that cloth masks that most people have been wearing since the start of this pandemic, mostly children in schools, are not effective. December 21, 2021, cloth masks are little more than facial decorations and should not be considered an acceptable form of face covering. Dr. Leana Wen from CNN. January 12, 2022, a cloth mask does not offer protection that you need by Asha Shahjahan of the Mayo Clinic. February 7, 2022, all of these are from them. We need to be talking about the off-ramp for masks. No one wants masks in schools, not teachers, not students, but it's, you know, it's time in this COVID pandemic to actually do a little bit of planning based on science as opposed to just announce the final announcement. Randy Wingardner, president of the American Federation of Teachers. So speaking of science, the same day, the science has changed. We also know about one-way masking, the idea that even if other people around you are not wearing masks, if you wear a high-quality mask that also protects you, the wearer. The responsibility should shift from a government mandate imposed from the state or the local district of a school, rather it should shift to an individual responsibility by the family who can still decide if their children should wear a mask if needed. Again, Dr. Leana Wen from CNN. Jen Saki, speaking on behalf of White House, when asked about whether schools should require masks, it's always been up to the school districts. That's always been our point of view and always been our policy from here. That's our federal government. Also, from Governor Pritzker yesterday, during his press conference, in response to temporary restraining order, set masks have never been about what is required. It is about doing what is right. He's saying he is not requiring it. He said yesterday, CDC.gov still recommends that you wear the most protective mask you can that fits well and you wear it correctly. He was, "Recommends, wear it correctly." How many children actually wear them correctly? So now I ask you this, our board, administration, parents, teachers, anyone who does not want to go mask optional, have you in the past year gone to a restaurant, sat down, removed your mask, and ate a meal? Breakfast, lunch, dinner, 30 minutes, one hour, two hours? Have you gone to an indoor sporting event for the school for a part of professional sporting event? Have you gone to a bar, a bridal shower, a wedding, got your nails done, your hair done? Any of the above? If you can say yes, then you have no right to tell any other people in your family say it. If you're to be hiding these things, be mindful.
Amanda, thank you. John McCory.
Hello, everybody. I'm John McCory. I'm not a parent, I don't have a speech, I don't have any breadth, I'm going to steal Mr. Allen's line, I'm here for my kids. A lot of crazy stuff going on, okay? Alls I can ask, take number three off your list, that's an option my kids need. Number two, this bullying stuff that's going on is portrayed down, I've got videos, my kids come home every single day, I have one here in Lee, one at Giles, every day, it's bullying, whether it's a student or a teacher. How I ask the students, where are they learning it from, when the teachers are doing it? But I'm going to be as real as it is, guys, we're all parents here. It starts in the house. It starts in the house. What are we doing to make people held responsible? Be a parent. Tell your kid, "I'm going to tell my kid, go to school, wear a mask, don't wear a mask." Don't disrespect anybody for their opinion. That comes from us as parents, that's what we do, we raise our children. And if we do that and we follow simple guidelines, then we can go a long way. I know a lot of you guys up here, I want to let you guys in. I have faith in the people who make the best decision for my child and safety for him. That's all I can ask.
I'm going to be honest, there's seven names that I can't make out here, so if you know you signed in to publicly speak, just kind of raise your hand and we can do it like that. Did I miss anybody? There's seven names that I did not read. Yes, please. Can I just have your name? You can just call it your name, okay?
Hello, Laura.
Laura, okay.
As a student of District Eighty, I can say that out of 125 students in my grade, more than half complain about masks. My brother, age 10, comes home with a migraine three out of five days of the week. Us as students feel uncomfortable while wearing masks. We feel unheard, disregarded, and as if, when we have no impact on our lives, we are unable to build relationships. Every year, we are taught that conversation in person as much as possible. Throughout online conversations, we are unable to see how people feel in their faces. This fully applies to wearing a mask too. In addition, I believe we are all taught at a very young age that breathing carbon dioxide is very harmful to the human body. This is exactly what masks do to us. I have seen from personal experience, no matter if you wear zero, one, or even two masks, you have the same chance of catching any disease. As stated before, one teacher has created tallies on the whiteboard regarding how many children in each class had masks under their nose. These students were punished with minors and majors and others were warned to not be like others. We are forced to do something against our will, which is to act illegally. A teacher, a teacher's job is to teach and not force their beliefs on students. One of them I want to let you know that as an eighth grade student, I have seen that we are treated, not treated fairly, and our voices are not heard. My request is to go mask up. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anybody that signed in that I didn't call? Okay. All right. So I want to say a couple of things and I'm going to turn over to the board. Number one, I appreciate how everybody was in that public comment section. Everybody in this room has seen other districts and how they behave and the inappropriateness and not respecting one's opinion. So for that, I and the rest of the board, thank you. That was great. We wanted to hear from you. Really appreciate that. Number two, the bullying piece. It's unacceptable and we are not going to tolerate it. I've said that before in other meetings. Most recently, we had an experience that I believe we handled. In this room right now, there's building principals, there's administration. What I can recommend to you from the board is if your needs are not being met or you feel that there needs to be more to it, you need to then send us, the board, an email. That's another option for you. This board doesn't want to hear that and we don't tolerate it. We don't accept it anyway. I want you to understand that. For me, as far as the mask goes, I'm going to give the board my opinion and where I stand. And then I want to hear from the rest of the board and then we'll kind of do some direction and then we're going to move forward with our NNT, the most efficient way possible. When the executive order came out from the governor, I was on the board and so, or the rest of my board member mates here, we followed what came out, we followed the order. And when people that I know in the community asked why, that was our answer. So we heard terms of, I heard terms of reasonable and prudent, which I'm very familiar with those terms, reasonable and prudent, totality of circumstances. In the most recent ruling Friday, that overturned that order, if you will, although we were not deemed as a plaintiff, I believe it's reasonable and prudent to then act and make decisions how we want moving forward. With that being said, a couple more pieces. I want us to move to mask optional. That is my opinion from my seat on the board and I want us to do that as soon as possible. Well, I want us to hold accountability. And I understand, I understand two pieces to it. You know, I defer to the education specialists in which sit to my right and across from me and against the bleachers. That I am not. If the administration says I need a couple of days to implement some things, I can respect that. So I'm going to use the term sooner than later, which to me, you know, in our previous discussions, if it's Friday of this week or Monday next week, I hope that's fast enough, but I want to move to mask optional, but I also want this board to be accountable. I don't want somebody else to come to Mr. Grimm, Mrs. Duzek, or anybody else and say, "You made the decision." The decision was made by me and everybody else that sit up here to stay. Therefore, when we threw our agenda for next week's meeting on Tuesday, it's my recommendation, we put it as an action item, we'll each individually vote. Until then, my recommendation is to move to mask optional at your place tomorrow and implement what you need to do and move forward then. I implore the mask optional. The ruling on Thursday comes out and it gets overturned and it goes back to mask for it, we will address that accordingly. But until then, that's how I move forward. I'll open it up to the rest of the board.
I agree.
Okay.
I have kids in the district as well, so, you know, the majority of us have kids in the district, we understand the challenges. I think one of the things that we made it clear, we were for options and we want to get back to normalcy. to get back to normalcy. Here's our opportunity to do it, so I think we should.
So, right, so all seven board members are in agreement at this point. Mr. Grimm, I'm giving the direction from the board, present seat, on behalf of the board, to move forward with mask optional. Your interpretation of that can begin tomorrow, and as far as the social, emotional, and your staff, you have to let us know if we're ready with that, but starting tomorrow, I'm going to turn over to you right now. So that's how we feel, that's how the board feels.
Does that mean that tomorrow, if I send my kids to school, are you going to be okay? Or are you going to send them off?
I'm going to defer that question, and I want to jump in, but I don't want to, I want to defer that to the people that are going to be here tomorrow, because I'm not. I want to defer that to Ralph and Michelle.
My mom is here.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, we're going to get there, just, I mean, yes, we're getting there. Aren't we working together? We're here, we're here. Aren't we working together, isn't that the whole idea that we came up with? You guys want a mask optional, apparently we're giving that to you, can we give them two days?
Yes.
Is there really a need? Or there's not?
Honestly, honestly, the kids have had enough for two years.
Two years is too late. All right, hold on, guys, please. It's been, it's been really, it's been so long. Guys, okay, guys, please, please, guys. Everybody, please, I know, emotions are high. Mr. Grimm, Mrs. Guzic, they're going to do the best they can tomorrow, and you're going to say, "Well, that's not really an answer, Sam." Yeah, it's not, you know, we're trying to work with that. If they, if, here, look, I just told you, I'm not an educator, and I don't, I don't work in these buildings, but the people that we entrust say they need a day or two, I'm inclined to give them a day or two. I understand why we don't want, but, you know, what would you like me to say, that they can come tomorrow with no mask? But I'm not, I can't say that, because they, they-
You can, you can.
They only need two days for them to go home with another excuse, not to do it. They only need two days. They only need that much. They have two days.
Okay, I hear you, I got you, I understand, I hear you, I can hear you very well, okay? So unless Mrs. Guzic or Mr. Grimm want to add anything, that's the best I can give you on that.
Will they be sent home if they come without a mask?
Yes.
Or bullied by teachers? Yes, they're going to be bullied by teachers.
They're going to school there because they're going to get suspended.
We need to repair, we need to repair the teachers, and we need to please send jobs tonight.
Here, I'm going to conclude it like this. We're moving as fast as we can, the board is agreed, and we're with you, mask optional, and the administration is going to implement that immediately. So they're going to do the best they can if somebody comes to school tomorrow without a mask. That's the best I can do. That's the best answer I can give you.
All we're looking for is just the same thing for when they want a mask, they said, "Hey, you know what? Tomorrow, you got to come to school with masks."
All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the motion at 8:00, at 9:55. No masks tomorrow.